Good evening, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Fruta City Council meeting. So as we get started, we're going to call the meeting to order. It is now 7:00 PM. Deb, would you please call roll?
Counselor Buck.
Here.
Here.
Counsel Harvey.
Here.
Counsel Crye is excused absent. Counselor O'Brien.
Here.
Counsel Bremen.
Here.
All right, if you'd please stand with me and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we've got an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda?
No changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Counsel Harv.
Yes.
Counsel Buck.
Yes.
Counsel Harvey.
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien.
Yes.
Counsel Bremen.
Yes.
Counsel 5-0.
All right, we've got one proclamation tonight. It's proclaiming the week of May 16th to 23rd, 2021, as National Public Works Week in the city of Fruta. And so Matthew's going to read that proclamation for us tonight.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Fruta, Colorado. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste system, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas the efforts of the public works professionals in our community focus on providing core services that directly impact the city of Fruta's strategic outcomes of enhancing quality of place, economic health, and lifestyles of the community. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and the children in Fruta to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works program in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Fruta Council proclaims the week of May 16th through the 23rd, 2021, as National Public Works Weeks and urges all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, and government agencies in paying tribute to the public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life.
All right, thank you, Matthew. Do we have Amanda and John here to accept that? Who's going to speak? Are you both going to speak? If you want to stop behind the mic, so, yeah, because we've got people remoting in online.
Okay.
They'll be able to hear you if you're at the mic.
First, I wanted to say Kimberly Bullen, the Public Works Director, would have liked to have been here to meet you tonight, but she wasn't feeling good today. So I got elected to be here, and we appreciate the proclamation, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
You taking this back to her? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good to see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our public participation time. So this is a section set aside for the city council to listen to comments by the public regarding items that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. Generally, the city council will not discuss the issue and will not take official action under this section of the agenda. We'd like to ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. And if you do have a comment, we'd ask that you step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. We also do have people remoting in remotely, so I may be checking with Shannon to see if there's any other public comment online that needs to be listened to. So with that, if there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on something that's not on the agenda now, it would be the time. Please state your name and address for the record. If you stop behind the mic, that way everybody can hear.
Mary Rutaker, 209 West Sunset Drive. Thank you for listening today. I am just speaking in opposition to the promotion that our community is promoting of the book called Rising Out of Hatred: The Awakening of a Former White Nationalist by Eli Saslow. And while I'm very happy that he has awakened and seen the light, I feel that this book assumes that because some of us are white, that we need retraining and that we may fall in line with white supremacist thoughts. This leads to the race shaming of the white population. It is this mentality that is in line with those of the BIOL movement, some people in the BIOL movement, who are trying to usher in new Marxism and divide and conquer. They're using divide and conquer tactics with us. I implore this community not to fall prey to these ideas. Coming from St. Louis, Missouri, where these ideas have had a huge grip on the community for years, I can tell you, it leads to further racial division. And I was just there the other week, and it's not great there right now, and a lot of it is centered on this idea. And there's still division and a lot of inequity there. It does not build up, but it tears down. If we really care, let's start by helping the underprivileged gain the necessary skills to be successful people. Let's use resources and talents to promote other people's success and show them that they do not have to be victims of society, but successful prosperous community members. This will go a long way to improve human relations. Race shaming and guilt tripping of an entire group of people is racist in and of itself, and as I said, it does nothing to promote unity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
We're not here to clap. I'm really encouraging everybody that we're not here to applaud and that, we're here to listen, and so it's distracting from our meeting to have that kind of reaction because we've got people that are on both sides of these issues. And so we want to be respectful of everybody that's here tonight. So that's what I'm asking, and I will stop the meeting if we keep having outbursts. So right here. Yes, come on up and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Deborah Moreland, and I live at 254 North Mulberry Street. I'm here to ask the city of Fruta to remove itself from the social agenda activities for Fruta for Equality. As benign and well-meaning as they may seem at this point, although we are assured that they do not involve critical race theory, we have seen signs of it, and we know what happened in other cities where these consciousness-raising activities escalate till demands are made, like defunding the police, and rioting begins if they're not met. We have already heard from admitted 20-year community organizer Shannon Robinson, and the book being promoted for the whole community to read uses the divisive, race-baiting term "white nationalist" as a synonym for racism. Typically, technically, "white nationalist" means a white person who believes in nationalism or patriotism as opposed to selling out their country to globalism. The left has once again tried to redefine language, making this phrase synonymous with racism, so it can be generalized to all patriotic white conservatives. And this is being done in our government right now and in other places to purge people. We really do not divide people up according to color. We come together based on our conservative values and belief in the U.S. Constitution. We support law enforcement. As Shannon said, language matters. Councilmember Karen Linhardt, who I personally know is a wonderful person, who is directly involved, also belongs to Rotary, which also appears to be involved. And most concerning is the council member on the Police Commission. According to Police Chief Dave Kraus, they have already given a presentation to the Fruta Police. Both Chief Kraus and Finance Director Margaret Sell both assure us that there has not been any pressure to change or defund the police. However, in the interest of objectivity and any appearance of bias and pressure, we ask that Karen should be replaced with a council member on the Police Commission who is not involved with these social agenda activities. Councilmember Kyle Harvey is manager of the Lithic Bookstore, which is also involved in selling books, so he also has a conflict. They have a right to free speech and involvement as citizens, but not as city council members. On the Fruta for Equality proclamation, it says the city has signed a letter of support to promote these activities. Admittedly, we have been asleep at the wheel, distracted by, I think, a lot of national crisis. To let this go this far, but want to correct that, I would like to see the Fruta City Council and the city staff to cease putting their endorsement, I'm just almost done, on the city logo on this kind of woke, and the city logo on this kind of woke, social agenda activities, and just run the city and put on great festivals to bring us all together as neighbors, like we've always done, which you do so well. Can we have a break from the pot-stirring agendas and just come together and heal after an incredibly stressful year?
Thank you, Deborah. I mean, is there anybody online that would like to speak? Shannon? All right, so if you're online, joining us remotely, you can dial *9, or you can raise your hand in the bottom menu bar of your computer. So we'll see if anybody wants to come on. Is there anybody else I'd like to, okay, right here in the second row?
Hi, my name is Andrea Barber. I live at 334 Crystal Court here in Fruta. I want to start by thanking you all for your service to our community. I've been a Fruta resident for 15 years, and it's truly a wonderful place to live and raise a family. I'm here tonight, though, because I have a concern about the city's involvement with the partisan group Fruta for Equality. I was surprised to see the city lending credence to this cause by highlighting their events in the most recent community newsletter. Equality seems so great that anybody who dares to argue with it automatically sounds like a racist or a bigot. While I am neither, I wholeheartedly believe that the equality movement is rooted in far-left Marxist ideology, which does nothing to heal or unite communities. Equality ideology shuts down free speech by labeling any opposition to the movement as hate speech. This movement is responsible for cancel culture, which tragically leads to the end of debate, discourse, and the free exchange of ideas, all things that great societies are built upon. It moves to eradicate systems of meritocracy, replacing them with systems that try to ensure equality of outcomes. It forces people to look at each other through the lens of race, gender, and class, rather than one's individual abilities, achievements, and worth. These are not the values of the majority of Americans, Fruta residents, and certainly not of the majority of parents. Let me be clear by saying that although I don't agree with the mission of Fruta for Equality, I 100% support their right to assemble and to free speech. As a private citizen, however, it concerns me to see my local government getting involved in partisan ideologies and issues. Knowing the Fruta City Council supports far-left ideology, it makes me wonder, would you also support a community-based constitutional civics class in the same way you've given your support to Fruta for Equality? What about upcoming pro-life issues and events? My guess is probably not, and in reality, I don't want you doing any of the above because these things fall way outside your job descriptions. According to your own website, you are to adopt the budget, determine the city tax levy, adopt ordinances and resolutions, ratify appointments made by the mayor, appoint a city manager, and enact necessary legislation required for the operation of the city council members. That's it. Nowhere does it mention that you should be promoting partisan ideologies bent on transforming the culture. As elected officials, you gain your ability to govern from the people, and I, for one, have not given my consent to be governed in such a way. This really does diminish my confidence in your ability to work through issues in a truly fair and balanced way. I'm here to hold you accountable to your elected roles. I'm further dismayed by the appearance of impropriety at work here. Two city council members are also involved with the other two entities sponsoring Fruta for Equality. Kyle Harvey manages Lithic Bookstore, Karen Linhardt's part of the Rotary Club. This is an obvious conflict of interest for them to be a part of the sponsoring groups and endorsing their support from their elected positions. I would like to ask that you formally withdraw your support from Fruta for Equality, and please refrain from getting involved in the social justice movement. Fruta is a wonderful, caring, inclusive community that values the freedom endowed to each individual by our Creator and protected by our Constitution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrea. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? Okay, somebody raise their hand in the back first. We'll bring them up, and then we'll come back right back up to you. You sure? All right, all right, go ahead, sir.
I apologize, I'm not really was well-prepared, I just found about this tonight.
Do you want to say your name and address for the record?
I'm getting there, thank you. Glenn Warner, 537 Amethyst Drive. So, yes, the, I really appreciate what's been said here so far. It takes me where I feel, wish, I wish I would have been much more prepared, but like you said, I only found this out tonight. I went to these things here briefly that happened last week, and it reeks with socialism. It's a silent little lamb in wool's clothing, is the way I look at that. I think that we live in a beautiful community. It's why I live here, it's very diverse. People get along, people work their problems out. We were, what, voted one of the 10 safest cities in Colorado once a couple of years ago? I really support what these ladies have said here. I think, and I formally request that our council here do withdraw any support from this. And I really appreciate any concern or the weight that you could put on that and leave this issue and put it aside. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. In the back?
Hi, I'm Trey Downey, 272 North Mesa Street. So I am an active member and proud member of the Equality Group in Fruta, Colorado. And I think it's very important for the city to understand and for council to understand that the main point of this entire group was to include more people at the conversation and at that table. And so it's always been one of those things that we've talked about at every single meeting about how we can get more people to join us at that table, whether they agree with us or they don't. And so really, it's not so much about the fact that we're looking for equality and we're trying to force something on somebody else, is that we're trying to have a conversation with people who might not understand other people. I don't think most people wake up every morning thinking that someone so-and-so is going to be a hateful person, that their only job is to hate that person. I think truly, in the end of the day, most people just want to say, hey, guess what? You probably don't understand me, and that's where this all comes down to. If people truly don't understand somebody, it's not that we think that you might hate us or we hate you, it's that we probably don't understand where the other person's coming from, and that it's, this is an opportunity for us to get together and actually be the community that you people are talking about and be good neighbors and have conversations with one another. You know, and as I do love, I've been a lifelong resident, I'm fourth generation in Fruta, and so I've lived here for a very long time, and I do love it here, and I'm proud of where I live. But the fact that we like to say that this is a very nice quaint little town is not accurate. You know, growing up as a gay man in Fruta, I lived with being bullied and being taunted and being called a faggot every single time I was on the bus. And so that's not the town that we should live in. And words do matter, and it's not so much that we need to concern ourselves with what people can and cannot do. If someone wants to say that word, someone wants to do those things, that is their right and that is their prerogative. But having conversations about those things and having an open forum where people can learn what they should or shouldn't say, why they should or why they shouldn't, is a great opportunity. And I think that is also why it is completely imperative that our council members who are a part of that committee allowed, are allowed to stay on that committee. Just because they choose to represent their city does not mean that they lose their freedom of speech. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Trey. All right, I saw his hand over here first.
My name is Wendy Wood. I live at 1891 J. and 6th Tenth Road. I appreciate what this gentleman just spoke back here, and I do believe that is the heart of, behind this whole thing, is that it is to, to bridge, to bridge a gap. And I think that a lot of things like this do have good intentions at their core. However, I think that oftentimes they snowball and they get bigger than what was intended, and they get twisted, as anything usually that humans start. They get corrupted. That being said, I did go to the event last Wednesday evening. I was, had the pleasure of talking with Shauna Key. Hope I said your name right. And, and it was a good conversation. I appreciate his heart to, to meet, you know, to be able to talk. At the same time, I have a lot of concerns because of, you know, echoing a lot of the things that these ladies that went before me said. If you're white in this room and you're proud of this country, this book that's being read or being promoted would say that you're, you're close to being a racist, or you're at least a white supremacist. That's a big deal. And you know what? Without sitting down and talking to Shauna Key, would he have maybe thought that about me? I don't know, you know? But when we actually got to converse, those are things that, that shouldn't be assumed, they shouldn't be out there like that, just as a blank statement. Why not pick a book that would be inclusive? You're certainly not targeting the people that probably should be reading this kind of thing, you know, that you really do want to, to change their thought processes. So why not pick a book that's, that's inclusive? Why not pick speakers that aren't totally for shaming white people, as Shannon Robinson was totally a supporter of Black Lives Matter, as we do well know that they are a Marxist movement? And I also echo that it is a conflict of interest. Yes, I totally support, and I will fight for your right to free speech, but it is a conflict of interest, and I am asking that you would remove your support as city of Fruta and as city council members. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. I saw a hand over here. All right, right here.
Samantha Wyatt, 165 South Peach. I guess I just want to put forth the idea that we want to be inclusive and free speech, and we're talking about these things and not shutting down anybody's ability to just live in what we consider America as a free country. But if, if you're shutting down conversation that can lead to better understanding of who your next-door neighbor is, how inclusive and how, how much are we preaching about rights for each other? When you're, we're just trying to start a conversation of trying to learn who we are as a community, I would encourage you to start questioning why you are not in support of that, because that says more about you than it does about our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. All right, right here.
Jerry Wood, 1891 J. and 6th Tenth. I don't have any prepared notes, so I'm just talking off the top of my head, and I'm sorry if it rambles a little bit, but, you know, nobody's trying to shut down communication, shut down discussion. But if your interest is in having discussion, launching with an ideology that starts defaming and slandering your neighbors and calling them white supremacists, this is not a good way to start a conversation. This is not a good way to have an open dialogue. I agree with so many things that have been said here, you know, and I agree that we need an open dialogue, but we cannot support this ideology. And as a city, I would ask you and urge you to look at where this, this ideology has flourished in this country, in many of the big cities. Those cities are burning. Those cities have been looted. Those cities have been destroyed, and they're continuing to be destroyed. This ideology brings hatred. It brings violence. So if you back it, that's what you're voting for. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. We've got a hand in the very back. Shannon, are you seeing anybody online, or we'll check as they're coming up.
I'm seeing none, Mr. Mayor, but if anyone is online and would like to speak, I would just like to remind them that they can let me know by raising their hand, or if you called in on the phone, you can hit *9. Thank you.
My name's Perry Tally at 122 Almond Circle, and I just found out about this meeting, so I have nothing. I'm just here to show my support for the things that have been said previously. I don't think the city should have any support, any logos involved in this, and I know that there'd be a lot more people here, there's a graduation tonight, so it's, from what I understand and from what I'm seeing, there's a lot more community support for city not being involved in, in this political back and forth. We were all pretty shocked to see city logos and library logos, Rotary logos, on some of that stuff that was happening. We all appreciate the dialogue and the, and whatnot, but having the city get involved is, is very concerning. So, yeah, this is kind of a small gathering, but there's a lot more people that feel the same way. So, thank you.
Thank you, Perry. Is there anyone else? All right, right over here.
Hi there, Stacy Potter of 165 South Peach. I just want to throw my support behind the equality work. I've actually read the book, and it's fantastic. I'm not sure how many people have actually read it, but it isn't shameful, it isn't shaming white people. It's just a conversation about a man who maybe learned some stuff. So I'm not sure why we would shut down a conversation where we could all learn and grow. Nobody's looking to shame anybody, but I think giving the opportunity to our citizens in our community to learn and grow, I think, is a positive thing. I don't think anybody has a nefarious agenda. So I appreciate the fact that that's been given the opportunity. I have read the book, it is lovely, and I appreciate that. So, thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Stacy. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Right here, sir?
Hi, my name is Mike Rutaker. I'm at 209 West Sunset Drive. I just kind of find out, found out about this, and so I didn't get a chance to read the whole book. I got the summary part, and usually summaries are by a different author, and trying to reflect and get into the mind of what the author's original intent was, but the summary is written by the author. And so I have started going through it, and I'm all for equality, but not the way that CRT, Critical Race Theory, has been doing it, and how things have been definitions, you know, traditional definitions now are being redefined. I'm against white supremacy, but I don't like being labeled a white supremacist. Even though it's very subtle in here, it's still there. Like, for instance, here, near the end, with the discussion questions in the summary section. Number 12, it says, "In 2012, the Republican Party had essentially decided to forfeit the minority vote." Well, I'm not sure if that's true or not, you know, but this is the assumption, the premise made in here. It had chosen, as Derek once predicted, to become an overwhelmingly white party, and now the decisive question of the election was whether enough white voters remained. And that's not true. You know, that is not true, because now it's just labeling everybody as one thing. Now, the comment after that, because that's found in Chapter 7, page 141, according to the footnote here, now the author says, "Derek's white nationalist revolution is coming to fruition. In 2012, the ideology gaining mainstream acceptance and major politicians are adopting it. After President Obama wins a second term, racial tensions among the populace explode. The Republican Party embraces disaffected white voters and becomes the de facto political party of white nationalists in the United States." Well, what is that saying? First of all, I didn't vote for Obama either time. Why? Because I don't like his policies, you know? But here it's making it, it's just assuming that we're going to be white supremacists. And then when you start reading Ibram X. Kendi's books, he's, you know, you are anti, you are racist, you know, it's binary. You're either racist or anti-racist. And if you are racist, even if you try to say, no, I'm not a racist, it's a damned if you do and damned if you don't. It's heads I win, tails you lose, because the only way to become an anti-racist is also then to become an activist for that. If you're not an activist, then you're racist. And this is where this stuff starts. I think Fruta for Character would be a better way, because this is judging people on their skin color, it's judging them on maybe their gender issues or something like that, and it's not getting to the heart of the issue. It's making it binary. You're taking something that Critical Race Theory has its roots, because it's a grandson of critical theory from 1937 with Engels and Marx, and it has its roots in communism. The times have changed, though. It says bourgeois versus proletariat, and now it's going to be, you know, anti-racist and white supremacist, and so I think...
Your three minutes are up, so finish your thought, please.
Okay, so I really think what ought to be done, first of all, council probably shouldn't get into this kind of thing, but if something, it ought to be looking at character and not equality. Equality sounds like a great term, though. Okay, thank you. And thank you for your services.
Thank you, Mike. All right, we'll go right back here.
Hi, everyone. My name is Michelle Boyd. I live at 1367 East Carolina. I didn't intend to speak tonight, so like everyone else, I'll apologize. I feel very hurt that we, as a community, have gotten here. Am I to address you, or?
You can address the whole council and the audience here.
This makes me so sad, because we're better than this. I've lived in this community... I've lived in this community for 20 years. I came here to give my daughters a better life. We talk about character. My daughters both went to college on a full-ride, character-based scholarship that they earned from Fruta schools. When we came here nearly 20 years ago, my daughter, at the age of six, came home and said, "Mommy, what does the N-word mean?" Except she said the word. She had never heard it. That was such a painful, horrible awakening moment for me. The internet wasn't quite there. You know, if you guys remember in 2003 and '04, it was dialect, right? So you had that crazy tone. Um, I came here to give them a better life. They are both amazing, productive, kind, giving women. I am reaching across the aisle at every opportunity. Last week's event, I did not, I'm sorry, but I don't understand where the socialist vein came from. I attended last week's event, which was healing from trauma, because my best friend of 34 years is on the opposite side of me politically, and I wanted to see healing. I wanted to know how to speak with her so that we can continue that friendship. 34 years is a lifetime. That is my sister, and I don't want to be divided from her. I am very, very hurt by the perception. Granted, I've not read the book. If you have, and you'd like to raise your hand and speak to that, but this, this initiative is bigger than a book. It's bigger than ideas about racism. I am a proud, white, Christian woman. I love my children. I love my husband of 28 years, and I know that many of you are too. You make me very sad when I hear you say things like, "We are putting you in a box." I am not doing that. I am basing every single interaction I have with you on who you are and what you present to me, and I pray and hope that you would do the same. Please, we are better than this. We are not Nancy Pelosi versus what's-her-butt Green. We are not AOC versus Lauren Boebert. My daughter works at the Capitol. She is in Congress, and she is close to that office. She has to go there every single day, in that place where our home, the People's House, was desecrated. She has to sit in those aisles and see those places where that violence took place. Violence is twofold. I know it's on the other side. There was mention of burning cities. I don't want my city to burn. I want my city to be harmonious and peaceful. But when you call for these people to remove their, um, support of this initiative, you have to also consider the Rotary Support Scholarships for Children. They support the rodeo. They support many different diversified events that are important to our community and the success of our children. Please, think of your kids.
Let's not clap, please. Thank you, Michelle.
Hi. Pavia Justinian, 1199 Wolf Creek Court. Um, I'm a member of Fruta for Equality, and I'm here to lend my support, I guess. Yeah, I, I apologize, I don't have anything super formal prepared, um, but I, I just, I wanted to clarify a couple of things, because it seems like a lot of people, I'm hearing, I'm hearing a lot of people thinking that, that this book, or that our group, is trying to say that all white people are racist, and we're not saying that at all. The book is about, is about one person named Derrick Black, who is the son of the former Grand Wizard of the KKK. He's the godson of David Duke, who was also, you know, Grand Wizard of the KKK. So we're talking about a specific set of people, and really, the big, the book is talking specifically about one person. So if you guys actually have a chance to read the book, you know, you'll, you'll see that we're really not talking about everyone here. And the other clarification that I want to make is about the term white nationalist, because I think, I'm hearing a lot of people say that if you're white, and if you're patriotic, then that makes you a white nationalist, and that's not what it is. White nationalist is actually a sanitized term that white supremacists and the KKK uses to make themselves sound more palatable to a wider audience. And it's, you know, I mean, it seems to be working, because we hear, we're hearing some of that confusion there, and we're not saying that patriotism is bad, we're not saying white people are bad, we're not saying everyone is a racist. You know, the book is about one man who started off with very, very racist extremist views, and his process of changing through open conversation and dialogue. And that's all we're trying to do, is just have a conversation. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Pavia. Right here?
Jamie Fuller, 1129 East Carolina. And I saw this issue on Facebook about an hour ago, and I have not read the book, but I do want to be here to lend my, uh, support to the Fruta for Equality. And one thing that I keep hearing is that somehow believing that equality for everyone is somehow socialist or Marxist, and I would very much disagree with that. The, the Constitution, one of the first things it says is that all men are created equal. And basically, our goal for our country is that everyone should be treated equally by our government. Everyone should have the expectation of being treated equally. And then, as far as this group, Fruta for Equality, I think that the public library is an excellent place to have conversation and to find places where we can agree, because I think that most people in this, in this, uh, whatever side that you're on, would agree that everyone should have equal rights. And, and so that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Mr. Mayor, we do have one person who'd like to speak, uh, that joined us virtually.
All right.
Uh, JP G., if you will, um, make sure you're not muted on your end. You're with the Fruta City Council now.
Hi, uh, my name is Jesse Gorel. I live at 700 Sandstone. Um, I also heard about this event from a Facebook group. Um, so again, I have not read the book. I have not, uh, attended Fruta for Equality events, so not affiliated in any way with them. I just wanted to, um, I guess, applaud the, um, City Council for, for taking this sort of, taking the steps necessary to try to address equality in our country. Um, I moved here a year ago. I'm a, you know, a transplant from another small town in Colorado. Um, so, you know, I don't have a whole lot invested here, but I really like Fruta. It's been a really great and welcoming community for me and, me and my wife. And I just, I, I would love Fruta to be a welcoming environment for anybody that, that chooses to live here and visit here and, um, travel through the area. Uh, it, it's a little concerning to hear other fellow Fruta members, uh, talk about, you know, the ideology and their concern with the Fruta being, um, affiliated with any sort of ideology for, uh, with, with this group, because my understanding with this group is that they're not affiliated with any partisan politics or movements like Black Lives Matters. Um, so it's just concerning to hear other people talking about any sort of quote-unquote ideology, when the ideology seems to be equality and, um, being a welcoming environment for all people. So, again, I just want to applaud our City Council and think, and thank you, you know, so much for, um, taking the, the steps to ensure our, you know, great tiny little town is, is welcoming for everybody. And, um, to be honest, I, I look forward to any, any further events with the group, and, um, gonna pick up a copy of the book myself, so thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Is there any more online? Shannon? No? All right, is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? This is your last op, all right, right here.
My name is Kelly Corn. I live at 1681 Ruby Lee Drive. Thank you, council members, for your time and effort in being part of our city, our community. I wanted to just say that I would encourage you to, uh, think about this movement and to, to discount it, to nip it in the bud. I think you, I agree with a lot of the opposition that has been spoken already. Our community is a bike-riding community. We have Hot Tomato, we have Bike Routes, we have the Design, uh, the Design, uh, the Dinosaur Museum, we have Mike the Headless Chicken Festival. Those are things that make Fruta Fruta. All men have been created equal. Why do we need an equality movement to come into Fruta? We don't. The White Nationalism Book and all that stuff? Why not read a book about John Wesley Powell, Down the Great Unknown? That's a conversation. There are so many other books out there that our community could gather around and have a conversation about, besides something that appears to be racist. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Right back here. Have you, haven't you already spoke once?
I have.
Nope, you, no, you're not allowed. You've got, you're one opportunity. So is there anybody else that has not spoken yet?
My name is Shawna Key Carroll, 324 North Colson Street. I'm amazed to see the turnout tonight. Civic engagement is amazing. This is the largest city council meeting attendance I've ever seen. I come to meetings all the time, so I feel like I can say that with some conviction. Um, and, and so, uh, to give you some context, um, I work for Mesa County Libraries. I'm a member of Fruta for Equality, and, um, I'm here tonight. I wasn't planning on speaking. I wanted to hear your thoughts, because I haven't heard everyone's thoughts yet. I really haven't. And believe it or not, it's terribly important to me that I do hear your thoughts. I grew up in this community, tiny little kid. I've wanted to leave a lot of times, but I've always stayed, because this community is so special. The people who are part of it are so special. For the folks who are concerned about our intentions, grab me. I, I want to give you my business card. I want you to come to one of our committee meetings. Please come to one of our events. If you have a few minutes, I know it's a big ask, but as a librarian, I kind of have to. I really ask you, maybe read the book, and I'd love to hear what you think about it. I'm not trying to change your mind. I'm trying to encourage us to have a mindful discussion about our community's values. Where are our communities coming from? We all know our community is changing. Why not have a mindful discussion about how our community is changing? The topics that our, that our committee is speaking about today are topics that have been discussed in our community before the committee existed. There are topics that are being discussed across the country. Come to our committee meetings, come to our events, let your voice be heard. Um, that's really all we're asking for, and if you wish, at the end of the day, to say, "Oh, you still have a socialist agenda, you still have a Marxist agenda," then, okay, maybe we need to agree to disagree, but please come meet us and join in our conversation. We're not trying to change hearts and minds, and if you're there, well, I think you'll be able to make sure that we're not going down any of the slopes that you're concerned about. It's not my intention, I promise you, it's not. But, you know, if you're there, you can help make sure that we don't get off track. So, um, we've got a couple more events coming up this month. Uh, we've got an author talk with Eli Saslow. He's gonna come, and, um, you can ask him some of the questions you have about his title of his book. You can ask him about these things. He's not afraid to answer them. Um, and that's my time, so thank you so much for coming tonight. It warms my heart to see so many people in our community turn out for a discussion whether or not we agree. So thank you for being here, and thank you for caring about our community.
Thank you, Shawna Key. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? All right, right here.
Hello. Shelley Warner, 537 Amethyst Drive. I was not planning on speaking. I'm really nervous about this stuff. I appreciate everybody standing up and talking. I'd like to say first, I disagree with the Fruta City Council being a part of this, supporting this, and I, I don't think that, uh, they should be a part of it. So I'd like to say that first. Secondly, I actually was curious about the Fruta for Equality, and so I went to a couple of events, and, uh, because I do believe in discussion. I do believe in something I heard last week, and I love the saying, "Have a strong back in what you believe in, have a soft front so you can be open to talking." And then I forget the last part, I believe the third part was about, "Have curious eyes, so that you'll always be open to listening." And so I stand here today with a strong back and a soft front and curious eyes. So one of the first things that caught my attention about the Fruta for Equality is the design of the logo, and, uh, I didn't even know what it was about, and alls I saw was this logo that had a bunch of horizontal bars, and that is what's used with Black Lives Matter. And so right away, my strong back said, "I don't like the look of that. I don't agree with, um, Critical Race Theory into communities and schools. I, I don't agree with social agenda, Marxism, totalitarianism, but I do agree in everybody has a voice and should be listened to." And I, I totally believe people should have discussion and agree to disagree. I love my community so much, and the neighborhood even that I live in, we have people of all walks of life. We have people with different political leanings, we have people with different, uh, social, economic, uh, where they're coming from, uh, some elderly, some youthful, young families. And I love our community, that we all talk, we all support each other. If somebody's trash bin goes rolling down the road because of the big winds we've been having, everybody jumps in and will grab it and grab it for the neighbor. People will talk, people will support, no matter where they're coming from. And on that note, I am a legal immigrant. I have a green card. I've been here six years, so I, I know what it is to immigrate, and Fruta has just welcomed me with open arms. I love Fruta. I'm proud to be a part of this community. I'm proud to be a part of discussion. Had wonderful talks with Shawna Key, thank you. Had a wonderful talk with, uh, some of their presenters, but I don't agree with that agenda, and even on its face value, whoever made that logo, for me to not know anything about it, right away, it-
Time's up. We're gonna ask you to finish that thought.
Thank you. Right away, it sent me on a direction to think divisively, and that's not who I am. That's not what I support. I love Fruta, and I support all of this. Thank you, everybody, for being here and speaking.
Thank you, Shelley. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? All right, right here.
My name is Matt Barber, 334 Crystal Court. I can't, I know virtually nothing about the book, and I'm not here to speak towards ideologies one way or the other. As have just about everyone, has said, uh, conversations need to take place. They need to take place freely and openly, uh, no matter what side you're on of any sort of issue. What my concern is more of a structural, organizational, uh, perspective that you folks find yourself in. Uh, you folks are, uh, given the great responsibility and the great task of running this, this community, this city. The very fact that we're having this conversation, and it's already kind of delving into this side versus this side, shows that there is, you know, there are issues there. There is a, a bipartisan, um, disagreement there. And what this board is doing, what this council is doing by opening up this particular conversation, it can quickly lead into a snowball effect, where we can have this discussion that is somewhat controversial, but then what happens with the next one when someone wants to talk about religious views? We are, you folks are already setting the tone that that's okay, because we're allowing this to happen. What if it gets into downright, you know, racial perspectives? Well, if you're supporting this, then you're also opening up that door to have those conversations for the council to support those things. All these different kind of conversations, they should be had, but there's a time and a place for it, and there's an organizational structure for it. I just don't want to see this council get to the point where we're getting involved in so many different beliefs, so many different discussions, that what you have to say is watered down. So please, the conversation needs to be had, but I don't know that it is the place or the responsibility for this council to get involved in that, because as I mentioned, it's a slippery slope, and then you're giving a voice, and you're getting, giving support to every single cause that comes before you. And that's unfair for you folks, and it's unfair for the taxpayers and residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at public comment? All right, I'm hearing none. You're not seeing anybody online?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
All right, with that, we're gonna close public- All right, with that, we're gonna close public comments and move into our consent agenda. So these are items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed to or met prior to the time they come before council for final action. These items will be approved by a single motion of the city council. So with that, we're gonna open up our consent agenda to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on something on the consent agenda? Have you seen anybody online that would like to speak on the consent agenda?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
All right, with that, I'm gonna close public comment on the consent agenda and bring it back to council. Any questions, comments, or do we have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Counsel Lenhart?
Yes.
Counsel Buck?
Yes.
Counsel Bremen?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, with that, we're gonna move into our public hearings. We got one legislative hearing. It's Resolution 2021-12, a request to approve a resolution amending the 2021 annual budget with a transfer of money between funds and supplemental appropriation of those funds for extension of the North Maple Sewer and Street Improvements Project and North Ash Irrigation Line Extension. So we've got, okay, Margaret is gonna be presenting on this one?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this budget amendment appropriates additional funds for the Ash Street portion of the sewer and irrigation improvement project on Ash Street. The actual cost came in a little bit higher than was budgeted for the irrigation portion. And then it transfers savings from that project, overall savings, to the Capitol Projects Fund for sewer line improvements and Aspen Avenue is an extension of the North Maple Sewer Improvement Project that's currently underway and taking advantage of some cost savings and, and good bidding climate right now for those project costs on Aspen and the other thing with Aspen Street there is, or yeah, believed to be a large amount of inflow and infiltration from that sewer line into the sewer system. Excuse me. It's hard to follow that crowd. If there's any questions, I'll try and answer those.
No, with that, we'll open up. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this item? You're not seeing anybody, Shannon, are you? All right, with that, we're gonna close public. Is there anybody on council that has any questions on this item? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-12, transferring and appropriating monies between funds to defray expenses and excess budgeted for the Ash Street Irrigation Line Extension and replacement of the Aspen Street Sewer Line.
Second.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Counsel Bremen?
Yes.
Counsel Buck?
Yes.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Counsel Lenhart?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, thank you, Margaret. With that, we've got, we're moving into, we have one quasi judicial hearing. It's for special event liquor permit application for CO2 UT gravel race. A request to approve a special event liquor permit application for the Fruta Rotary Club to sell beer on Saturday, May 22, 2021, from 11:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. In the Civic Center Memorial Park located at 325 East Aspen Avenue. We've got our Deputy City Clerk Deb Woods here to present on this one.
Am I still on the meeting? There with me. Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Shannon. Hey, Mayor and City Council. This is a, an application for a special events liquor permit that was submitted by the Fruta Rotary Club. The Colorado to Utah Bicycle Race begins and ends at Civic Center Memorial Park on Saturday, May 22, from 11 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. And the liquor permit will allow the Rotary to serve beer to patrons who provide a photo ID. This is diagram submitted by the Rotary, except I added some labels and arrows. For a point of reference, the orange arrow points to the pavilion at Civic Center Park where the stage is. The red arrow points to the Beer Garden where the perimeter of the beer is illustrated with the red triangle. The Rotary's event narrative states that the Beer Garden will be enclosed with metal fencing. There is one entrance exit at the tip of the light blue arrow. And there is a smaller square indicated with the light green arrow that shows the beer serving area where, which is where the beer will be poured and given to patrons. The Rotary Club submitted all the necessary paperwork and fee to be granted a special event liquor permit. This is a list of everything that's required and was included in your council packet. I think it's worth noting that Fruta Police Chief Dave Kraus did not have any concerns about Rotary's application. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the city council approve the application for a special events liquor permit for the Fruta Rotary to serve beer at the, I understand it's called the, people are calling it the Co-Tuit Gravel Race Event at Civic Center Memorial Park on Saturday, May 22, from 11:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. Subject to the following conditions. No alcohol shall be brought into or out of the licensed premises. The Fruta Rotary Club will be solely responsible for the enforcement of liquor laws. And all other procedures presented by the Frutery Rotary Club will be followed. Do I, is Mr. Lou Mudd here tonight? There you are, Lou. I'll turn it over to Lou if you'd like to come up and say a few words. And in this picture, that's Lou in the back there.
I'm Lou Mudd of 126 South Maple Street and I'm, I guess, the lifetime permit person for the Fruta Rotary Club. I file these permits regularly, except last year. And it's the sole way that Fruta Rotary makes funds for the scholarships and all the things that we support throughout the community. We have a good track record for beer service without any incidences over the years that I've been doing this. And so I appreciate your consideration and then hopefully you'll continue to approve these so that we can support our community. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Lou. All right, with that, we are gonna open this up to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this public hearing item, now would be the time to do that. If you're online, then you can dial star nine or raise your hand in the bottom menu. So is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? Have you seen anybody online, Shannon?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we're gonna close the public comment on this item and bring it back to council. Are there any questions, comments, or motion?
Yeah, I'll recuse myself since I'm a member of the club.
Okay. Any other comments or motion?
Since Deb read the whole entire motion, can we just say so moved as to what Deb said? So moved to what Deb said.
Second.
Sorry. Counsel Buck?
Yes.
Counsel Bremen?
Yes.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
All right. We're gonna move into our administrative agenda. The first item on there is a Capitol Projects update from our city engineer, Sam Atkins.
Mayor, members of council, as Sam Atkins is preparing to come up to the podium, I've, I asked Sam to give an update on the Capitol Projects. I know we're not quite halfway through the year, but wanted to just provide an update on which projects we've completed, which projects we've, you know, run into, such as the example shared earlier of, of an additional sewer incident on Aspen Street, while we already had the road opened up on Maple that we needed to address. And then what Capitol Projects are upcoming. I know you're all aware of the projects for the year, so we'll try and just go through updates for you quickly. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Was the key word, Sam? Just quickly.
It's not gonna cut it. I didn't actually prepare anything tonight. No, this is the Capitol Projects Update for 2021. Just going through the, the projects, Street Overlays is one of them. That just bid Friday. We had a $200,000 budget. It came in a little over. We kind of knew that going in. We've kind of been coming under. So we're gonna go ahead and remove Kiefer section from the overlays and then the total would be 169, 450 or 460. We are improving Mulberry from paper to Ottley, Sycamore, Aspen to Pine, and then South 18 and a half Road next to Doby Creek where it's really, really narrow. So the sidewalk replacement for 2021 hasn't begun. We usually start later in the, in the season. This is last year's map, but it kind of gives you an idea of, we kind of pick a variety of places where we spend about $15,000 in the 80/20 program with sidewalk replacements. We also do two or three curb ramps to try to get our ADA up to snuff, you know, sins of the past of not meeting what the current code is. And then we've been doing anywhere from five to probably about $7,500 worth of concrete grinding where we're not physically replacing the concrete, but it's, we're able to meet ADA and do it cheaper than, than a full-on replacement. On the Pine Street Bridge, that project is under contract. GA Western was the successful submission. The, the budget was 2.125 million. They came in at 1.526 million. I mean, that's, that's a good number, but we do have right-of-way acquisition that's still part of that. So it's not like that's the total. But we should get Plumbery Design, the 30% design from SGM in a week or so, and then that'll help us identify some of the utility relocates and, and that kind of thing. So we talked about the, a little bit about the Maple Sewer Replacement. That's replacing the sewer in Maple from paper to McCune and then overlaying the street. That budget was $622,000. The bid came in pretty well at 4:15. I think we have $50,000 worth of contingency in that and we're probably gonna lose, use very little of it. So that, that's kind of going into the, the Aspen Sewer Continuation. We have a little bit of work left. There's a service that got missed. They thought, they thought the sewer was serving off a side street. It wasn't. So they gotta go back and put that in. And then we got some backflow preventers on some of the sewer services that were extremely flat. And we've had some issues in the past with blowing liquid into people's homes when we do our cleaning services. So to prevent that from happening and prevent a cost to the city for any kind of repairs, we end up putting in backflow prevention. That leads us into the Aspen Hour or Aspen Avenue Sewer Replacement. In an effort to locate where the sewer services were on Maple Street, some of them were coming off side streets, some of them, when, when you got to intersections, some of them were coming off Maple. We identified that there was what appeared to be, what was thought of as an abandoned line, which is that dashed red line from Maple to Ash Street. Turns out there are several homes that are connected to that sewer. That sewer is severed in a couple places as a result of it being abandoned. So we kind of felt like we had an issue there. We had good prices with Sorter and, and their ability to just move on with that project and with some cost savings. Just felt like it was, it was a good opportunity to continue the project to the east and that would substantially reduce some of the infiltration, given the fact that the pipe was open. So that project has actually started and they've constructed, I don't know, maybe two-thirds of the way to the first manhole on, on the main. And then they've got to go back in and connect the sewer services. The Ash Street Sewer Replacement, that was a separate project that was bid before Maple Street. That project is complete. You know, it was a $262,000 budget. The final cost was $155,000. So that's another place where we had, or that just felt logical to move over to Aspen Street. Project we talked about before is a 16-road rail crossing. We had some complaints about the timber crossing on the southern tracks. So we did get a grant from Federal Mineral Lease District. We, the plan is to widen this to 36 feet, which is what the road section is, both north and south. Replace the timber ties with concrete ties and expand that width of, of the crossing as well with the ties. The process is asked to go through the PUC and UPRR. So we've designed our portion of the improvements, which is the grading, the pavements, the geometry, so to speak. The, the panels themselves and the cross-it guards, those are being designed by Union Pacific. And so we're, we're kind of in a waiting period on, on them getting that completed. The gateway enhancement on Highway 340, that's, well, the contract is complete. So, you know, originally we had a budget of about $108,000. The bids came in at 230 something, I believe. We, we did a little bit of changes to the contract, so we gave them more time. And then the bids came in at 208. The final contract amount was 2036. What remains is the remaining four pieces of art and Jeff Bates is working on that. We're hoping that he will have those done and those will be installed a week before Mike the Headless. So that is the plan on that. We, we've had this H2S gas mitigation project for a year or two now. I know we had JUB do some investigation on what we might be able to do to reduce the H2S gas in the trunk line upstream of the treatment plant. They, they did a little test study. It kind of worked. It was doing some venting upstream, so they were reducing the, the levels of the H2S gas. However, it also creates odors. And so we're really not at a position where we've solved the, the issue. We've had a couple of meetings recently to try to move forward. We've talked to Grand Junction on what they do. They're more of a chemical type treatment. And so we're, we're moving forward and trying to find a solution to that problem. A little salt wash basin master plan. We had a, a plan there where we were, we were doing spot repairs for erosion where we were up against some of our trails. Kind of felt like it was more important to look at the whole project holistically. And, and so we decided to do this study where, and, and plan where we could make the improvements. Also trying to incorporate recreational opportunities in, in that study. And what we were gonna do is we had $50,000 in our budget and we were planning on a $50,000 Colorado Water Conservation Board Grant. That grant is coming out in July, I think, and it would have a submission date of like November. So that's gonna be something that's later in the year. If we get the grant, then we move forward and we'll get a consultant on board. If we don't, then we'll have to adjust. This is the Wayfinding and Signage Project. We, we have, it's hard to see the map, but this is kind of the map that would be located at various locations in town. We have a, a red route, a green route, a blue route and a yellow route. And they're abbreviated dinosaur names. When you name them, I couldn't pronounce three of them, so I didn't want to embarrass myself up here. But anyway, the, the project is to get some wayfinding signage within the city. We're trying to wrap up the design now and hopefully we can get the implementation done over the summer. Oops. So the Fremont Street Design. So the Fremont Street Design, that's being done by Kimbley Horn. That's $250,000 budget. We've gone through the 30% design so far with the review with C dot. We were planning on a intersection that had a signal. Our plans were prepared that way. We had upfront meetings with them and at the 30% plan review. Hey, what if we did a Florida T? That's that came out of C dot. So we're kind of we're kind of punting a little bit and and to give you an example of what a Florida T is. It's 23 Road and Highway six. It is 32 Road and Highway 50. It's it gives the it has medians in there where the through movement on the T leg does not ever have to stop. And so the the negative is the expanse of the project. It extends it considerably further out. The positive is that through the traffic studies, it has been established that we will not in the next 20 years need a signal there. It it will function without a signal. If we didn't have the modified intersection, it would warrant a a signal and and those are that could be a $400,000 deal, a signal, just a three legged signal. So it is a a pretty big money thing. So we're we're working through that. We're hoping to have that completed before the end of the year on the design. The other one is the active circulation plan. That one's being done by Farr and Pierce. That's a $90,000 budget. We completed about a month ago, the online survey and the online map to input, get input from the public on where they see some of the problem areas. Our next meeting this month, we're supposed to have more meat of project locations, project issues identified and solutions and prioritization of the projects. That'll help us with some of our capital planning from the transportation side. And that project will ultimately be complete sometime this fall. So both Reed Park and Little Salt Wash Park design, we had $100,000 in there for design relative to the Frost Plan being completed. Still have that timer going? The we're getting close. We're getting so this this is the Little Salt Wash Park improvements, expanding the grass field area, expanding the parking, putting the pickleball courts in. I think city staff can help with some of the civil work on this as well as Reed Park. We might be able to get more of the specialty people to do the specialty stuff and maybe able to get both of these done under in that $100,000. And this just happens to be the Reed Park improvements with the skate park and new pavilion to the north and then new basketball court and new bathroom and and storage facilities. The one that's going on now, we've got the big salt wash trail connections. There's three sections that are being complete. I think the third section will be paved next week. Had a bit budget of 57,000. The bid came in at 45,000. I think they're probably going to spend a little bit of that because they've got some decorative rock that they want to put on the side to kind of dress it up. But we should be in in budget and that should be done in a couple of weeks. And the buzzer did not go off. You sure you started that thing?
Does anybody? All right. Does anybody have any questions for Sam? You have 20 seconds.
Yeah, that T thing, where did you say there were examples of 32 Road and 650 and where was the other one?
So Highway 32 or not 32 Road and Highway 50 out.
Right.
Basically, Whitewater area. Those are both signalized.
Yeah.
So as you're going towards Montrose, you have the through movement. And then the only person, so it's the northbound, I guess, traffic that stops there. If you have a left, if you have a left turn movement off of 141.
So it's like that, but without a light.
It's like that, but without the signal.
Okay.
The the geometry would be the same.
So it's a T.
It's a it could be they they call it a Michigan T as well, if that makes you happy. The old states claim it, but yeah.
They'll have to do a left turn just on their own, right? I mean, so they're the
They would, but they'd have an acceleration lane and they have a median that will separate them from the eastbound traffic.
Gotcha. I have a funny question though, but when when the sewer line is abandoned, do you do they take that out or do they just leave it there?
We typically abandon it in place unless we don't have another corridor, then it's remove and replace. So a portion of the existing sewer is being removed now, but at this point, there'll be three lines in there. Two non-active, one active line.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions for Sam? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we're going to move into we've got a municipal court update. Judge Dan Robinson. Is he remoting in? All right. Hi, Dan.
I'm going to try to put some charts up and if I fail at that, it's my incompetence, not anyone else's. But we do have some some statistics for you. And really my comments tonight are really about until we get to the review process, the budget, which you'll be happy to know is on target and we're not, we don't need extra money. And the other issue is, well, I'm going to try to find these. You know, this is disappointing because I practiced this before this, but now it doesn't seem to. Let me try this. I did send the mayor some of these statistics.
I was gonna say, if we had the presentation of Shannon, he could probably present it.
Yeah. I apologize. I thought I could get to my desktop, but I'm using my laptop and not my regular computer, so I'm not sure how I can do that.
What's that? I'm looking to see where. Dan, were those the ones on the Fruit Ordinance on curfew and the duty of parents?
Actually, no, but we can talk about those and then I will email your more recent. I sent you the last 2020 statistics, Mr. Mayor. And I can send you an update to that. All I really had was where we are to date and
Why don't you go over some of those stats? I guess I don't know if we need to see them or not. If you want to just review them with us. I'm not seeing I'm not seeing it in my inbox, so.
Okay, those that was the previous a couple of weeks ago, but the I think probably the more important issues are those around, well, one COVID. And we can do, we continue to conduct court remotely. And I always start this out by inviting any council members who can to please join us in court for just a brief time. If you like, you can join us remotely. We meet every Wednesday at four o'clock and we all like to have visitors. The issue on legislation, I think, is is fairly significant because it will could have a direct impact on our court. And speaking of COVID, just quickly, I'll tell you today or about an hour ago, the Chief Justice from the Colorado Supreme Court issued a directive on the safety of Colorado courts. They are directing all Colorado courts to continue to use face masks and maintain social distancing. And I think we we track like all of you do, the the COVID statistics in Mesa County. And we're of course concerned. What I would like to see us do is move to a hybrid between a remote court as well as in court. And we would do that by those who don't feel safe coming to court to have a computer set up that they could join us remotely. And those who want to show up in court, we will be there live to hear the case. So that's a thought to transition to back to fully live court. And I continue to talk to the other people involved with municipal courts, the Colorado Municipal Courts Judges Association is pretty progressive group that's on statistics, on gathering statistics and public opinion about how we are conducting ourselves. But the I have to say, remote court for us has been quite positive. And the reason it is, is that people have commented, and this is anecdotal, but when you have to drive to court and wait for your turn to show up in court, sometimes that can take an hour before you can get your case heard or adjudicated. And remote court gives people an opportunity to leave work, join us by a cell phone from their car. And we have not lost attendance, nor have we lost any kind of in our follow up from sentence. So we continue to be really quite high compared to most courts. I I think I've said this before, but for those of you who don't often track on this, the key issue for municipal courts is how effective we are at getting people to comply with the sentence and return to court. Our court is celebrated as one of the best. We one of the ways in which municipal courts can really mess that part up is that if they sentence defendant to an impossible sentence, then they're never going to see that person again. You're going to end up needing to issue a warrant to bring them back. We are very clear in our sentencing that we expect the defendant to comply with it, but if they cannot comply, we ask them to contact the court so we can discuss either payment plans or modifying the sentence in some way without without compromising the importance of the fine. The current legislation that could impact our court is one that is House Bill 1175. I don't know the status of that right now, but that's a bill that would allow offenders for traffic violations to pay the fine or pay a nonprofit the money instead of the city. I I don't know because I'm not privy to that information about how much revenue the city of Fruta gets from traffic violations or from I don't know how that would impact this, but I can tell you, most courts oppose that in in part because it would require a whole another function to our court clerk to track. Is this a legitimate nonprofit? Did they make the payment? If they didn't make the payment to the nonprofit, we have to hold another hearing to bring them back. Whereas if they're expected to pay it to the city of Fruta, we have a direct contact to determine whether they've paid it or not. That bill, and I might add, this is nothing partisan. These bills, one's a Republican bill, the other is a Democrat bill. It's my opinion, and actually not just my opinion, but the collective opinion of the Colorado Municipal Court Judges Association, that this is an administrative burden to municipal courts as well as the revenue aspect to this. Not that we oppose nonprofits getting money, but it seems like if a traffic offense is committed, the the victims, so to speak, are the people of Fruta, not not a nonprofit. So we would like the victim to be compensated, police time and court time, that sort of thing. That's who bears the cost of that. At any rate, that bill, I don't know what the current status of it is now, but the other one is SB 21 060 062. This bill is one that prohibits bonds for municipal offenses and requires three failures to appear. And I'll quickly translate that. If person doesn't appear in court, there are two options that we have. If they are previously been sentenced and we're conducting a review to comply with their sentence, that is a failure and they failed to appear. Our option there is we can always issue a warrant. We're reluctant to issue warrants for those kind of cases. Instead, we have used what's called a show cause hearing. And basically it's a hearing to show cause why you should not be held in contempt. We find that that letter is equally effective to get a defendant back in court. But in this instance, if somebody commits, we'll say a misdemeanor, a theft misdemeanor in the city of Fruta, if they don't show up in court, this bill requires that they miss court three times before you can issue a warrant. That is three failures to appear are too many. If you know, the court's authority is to, if you are issued a citation or a summons, we expect compliance. And if somebody doesn't appear at least three times, that's too much and we would like to be able to issue the warrant if they don't appear. Warrants, by the way, is not that they the police will go out and arrest the person. It's basically what's called a PR bond, where they sign a promise to appear. They don't have to pay any money, but we issue a $100 PR bond depending on the case. And that means that they will not have to pay any money. They just require to show up to court or they will forfeit the $100 PR bond. It's a promise to appear, basically. So obviously we oppose that that bill. I I don't know what the rationale or the reasoning is that the sponsors of this bill wanted it to as I suspect it's the ACLU, that's often where these many of these bills come from. And the third bill is one that is well, the current statute is is that the Victims' Rights Act is suggested. It's not mandatory that the Victim Rights Act applied in municipal courts. Some of us feel that it is important to acknowledge the victim and what their loss might be. Our prosecutor, the city of Frutas prosecutor is really very good at representing the victim's rights. In all cases, I will issue a restitution order, which requires the offender to pay the victim within a given timeframe. There's a few of those that are way too much for, I mean, there are a lot of money this. We've dragged some of these out two and three years to get people to make payments on on there are thousands of dollars that the victim lost as a result of the defendant's action. But we do not let those go. I just think it's important that we we keep with those cases. We keep monitoring them and we keep getting whatever payment we can for the victim's benefit. But this act, our bill that's been proposed, is that it makes it mandatory that municipal courts incorporate the Victims' Rights Act. I don't think that's necessary in part, again, the the burden that it creates on our clerk. We only have a part time clerk. We can and do notify victims. It's more of a prosecutor's function to represent the victim's rights. If they don't do that, I insist that we bring the victim. The victim always has a chance to speak in court, but if there's no mention to the victim and the victim's loss, I, as a judge, will bring that up and make sure that victims' rights are at least considered. Those are three bills that I think would have an impact. The other issue that I think we might might be important to know about is the city of Fruta currently has three ordinances that address parents' responsibility. And one of those is a curfew ordinance. That's 9.01.004. That's that juvenile cannot be out wandering around between 9:30 PM and 5:00 AM unless they're accompanied by his or her parent. We've had one or two cases in violation of that ordinance, a couple of kids out at two or three in the morning. Then and they did get charged and we did address it. But that's really an issue about parents more than it is a juvenile in my mind, because a parent should know at what hour their kid is home or not. The other one is the permission required to deal with minors. I think this is important. It's a good ordinance that Fruta has. It's 9.01.006. And that's any person, firm, corporation, pawn shop, junk dealer, secondhand dealer, who knows buys purchases or exchanges any article or merchandise with a minor child without the written authorization of that sale or exchange with the parents. It's a class A municipal offense. And I think this ordinance probably came from some time ago and you, some of you may have been on the council when you passed this, but my suspicion is is that it's as much about drugs and any other kind of but my suspicion is, is that it's as much about drugs and any other kind of transactions that would be going on with a minor that should be impermissible. And so it's a good ordinance. The other one is the curfew of the parent or guardian, guardian responsibility. That's 9.01.005. Any parent having custody or care of a minor under the age of 16 who knowingly allows or permits that minor to loiter, ramble, play, pawn, or frequent any streets, alleys, sidewalks, in any public place, at times prohibited by the previous curfew statute of ordinance. That's a noncriminal municipal offense. With that is the only ordinance that really places a direct responsibility on parents, that they must not allow their, their child to be out wandering around at that time. But that, what we have looked at recently were three ordinances that strengthen the parental responsibility, one of which is that parents are responsible for the fine. I have two thoughts about this ordinance. This is from other jurisdiction. It's been proposed for other municipal courts. One is, I believe strongly that a kid who commits an offense has a fine. They ought to pay that fine, and I know ultimately, the parent may become responsible. But there's things that the young person can do to work for their parents, do extra jobs, extra work. But I, I think it's been the philosophy in our court that if you committed the offense and you owe a fine, it's your fine, not your mom or your dad's fine. And we try to stay with that, but this ordinance is one that if they don't pay it, the parent is responsible. The other one is requiring, and I kind of like this one, it's a duty of parents to appear in court. This is an ordinance that is designed to make sure that parents, one, you'd be surprised how many kids show up in court without a parent. And of course, we can't take a plea. We can't do anything with that, with that juvenile without a parent presence. So this is an ordinance that addresses the obligation of parents to be in court with their kid if they're in trouble. And the third one is, really, it comes out of urban districts. It's about parent responsibility where kids are involved in gangs. It sort of shifts the burden on the parents that there can be a violation if a parent knowingly allows their child to participate in gang activity. I'm not sure it's relevant to Fruta, but it is one of the ordinance that's out there. So there's a trend, is what I'm pointing to here, is there is a trend with municipalities trying to strengthen the responsibility of parents towards their kids and hold them accountable. That's, those are kind of the developments that are out there right now. With respect to our court specifically, the, a couple of cases that concern me recently, and one is homeless gentleman who had a dog bit somebody on Christmas Eve in front of City Market, and then on Christmas Day, the dog bit another person and in front of another store downtown. This case became increasingly more complicated with, in that, first of all, the owner, he disputed it was his dog, which, of course, I didn't believe. But in order to address that issue, that you have to have a hearing, and that, that's just due process. And so we had a hearing, another, a woman happened to show up and say it was her dog, not his. And of course, this dog was on a schedule to get euthanized. Once a dog bites twice, that's, that's the remedy, is euthanasia. At any rate, it drug out for, this case was drawn out for probably six months because, and understand, there's a cost associated with this. The city of Fruta has to pay for a dog that gets impounded, which this one was. There's a transport, transport fee. There's also an impoundment fee. In this particular case, the impoundment fee was more because this was some kind of special kennel for Dr. Lecter-type dogs or something, but animal control services had to charge more for this dog's residence with them. And the goal here was to get through the legal process in order, order the dog euthanized. Well, then, it turns out that this gentleman was, appeared to be incompetent. To me, at least, he claimed that he was working for a counterterrorism organization and had permission to sleep in the Fruta park and use any facility he wanted to relieve himself. So that required with an incompetent defendant that we appoint counsel. And once we appoint counsel to determine competency, the meter starts running for the appointed counsel. And at the end, this case was finally resolved. He was determined to be incompetent. We did prove that he owned the dog. But it was three separate hearings, and his lawyer had to be present at all of those, as well as visit with him in jail. The, I guess the moral of this is that dogs in Fruta and the dog ordinances really need to be kept in force, but it would be very helpful if the ordinance could be streamlined. When a dog bites twice, it's clearly a dangerous dog, and we've really got to address that more quickly. And by the way, I think the police department probably has to pay for this impoundment fee at $25 a day, so you can imagine the, the cost of that. It's just a headache how, how we're going to address the homeless issue as well as the dog biting issue. Right now, there haven't been many homeless cases, but when we look back at our warrants and for the last two years, many of those are unfulfilled warrants. That is, that they didn't contact the defendant. We dismiss those warrants. We were careful in how we did that. We did it with the review with the police, as well as old parking tickets. Some parking tickets are two and three years old. If somebody isn't going to pay the ticket after three years, the last thing we want to do is convey a message, and if we wait long enough, you're, you know, you're going to get out of your ticket. But most of these were out-of-state tickets, parking tickets, and many of them were during festivals or other events downtown where we didn't see the benefit nor did the police in pursuing out-of-state delinquent parking tickets, so we dismissed them. But we're back.
Dan, I'm going to interrupt you for a minute here because we've gone about 25 minutes on your presentation. Do you have that, I found that statistic, so I emailed it to Shannon. So I'm going to have him just share that with counsel via email. So then we've got all the stats. So there anything else in closing that you'd like to, that you need to ask as a counsel?
I have at least another two hours here, Joel, to present.
I think we're going to lose a connection soon.
Well, I wanted to tell you about another issue that's of concern, but it's really more out of the bailiwick. We're going to do a review later, so I'll save it for then.
Perfect. Anybody have any questions for Dan? All right, well, thank you, Dan. Yeah, and we'll be chatting with you a little bit later here.
All right, sorry to filibuster, everybody.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our city manager's report.
All right, Mayor, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to give a quick report. We, I wanted to make sure you all were aware that Ken Cry, Councilor Ken Cry, who's excused absent tonight, has been appointed the Mesa County Municipal Board Member for AGNC. So he, there's one board member for all of the municipal, all the municipalities in Mesa County. And so Ken will start that. In June, he, being out of town this week, he's not able to make tomorrow's meeting, and AGNC will look to a council member from the town of Palisade as an alternate when Ken can't make it. But he's worked out his schedule to make all the meetings except for May and September for this year. Also, Mayor Kincaid and I will be participating in the State of the Grand Valley. It's an annual event hosted by the Grand Junction Area Chamber of Commerce tomorrow. So if you're interested, I think there's still opportunities to sign up for that luncheon. It's at the CMU Ballroom. And then we have been working with 14K Media, as you are aware, who is, who has been preparing a State of the City video that we plan to release annually each May. And we have that to show you tonight. It just, they just completed it. The caveat is, they're actually uploading the final, and the one we have has two mistakes. Unfortunately, it has Mayor Kincaid's name misspelled, so they fixed that, and it has a kind of a.
Well, Mike, can you just send out the link to everybody?
Yeah, we can.
And they can watch it on there. I mean, because I know it's probably, what, seven, eight minutes long?
Yeah, if you don't want to watch it tonight, we'll email it to you.
Email it out to everybody and.
So it'll, it'll be released. We'll get that out to the public this week, and that's all I have for tonight.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, we're going to move into our council reports and actions. Our first item is our council meeting on May 25th, looking at canceling the workshop and then scheduling that visit with Moon Farm to learn more about what's going out there. I will not be here on the 25th. I'm leaving town on that day. Lori's going to be in charge for that. 10 days, I'm out of town, so. Is everybody good with that? I think we. Yeah. So, so we're going to, so we're, we need a motion, don't we, to cancel that meeting?
Also, what, what time would you like to go out there? And we can't know what time, and we'd like to know how many are planning to be there.
It says 6:30 in there.
It says 6:30 on the meeting.
Right, but you can pick whatever time you'd like.
6:30 works for me.
All right, and then he wants the headcount, nah, most people going to be able to make that? All right. All right, with that, we're going to move into our council reports and actions.
Did we have to do a motion on that?
What? Do we need a motion? All right, all right, never mind. Before we move into that, do we have a motion?
I moved, we canceled the May 25th meeting workshop and scheduled a visit to the Moon Farm for the city council on May 25th, 2021, at 6:30 PM.
I'll second that.
Did you say O'Brien? Yes. Yes, sorry.
It just went off. Counselor Buck?
Yes.
Counselor Lenhart?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Breaman?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right, now we're moving into council reports and actions. We're going to start with Matthew.
My good news is I have nothing to report. Chief Jeff meets tomorrow morning at 7:30.
All right, Heather?
Nothing to report, but can I ask two questions of Deb?
Yeah.
We had the visit to the water treatment plant scheduled when COVID hit, and we had to cancel it. Could we reschedule that? I'd be interested in going to that. And then also, can you resend out the information about attending the, remoting into the municipal court on Wednesdays, the link, because now that I'm on summer vacation, I can actually do that. Thank you.
All right, Kyle?
Nothing to report.
Karen?
Nothing.
Lori?
No, but one statement or thought. So in talking with Moon Farm and knowing we're going out there, they're very, they're, you know, intending to close. I think it's 2nd of June, and they're like $60,000 short. And so I was asked, where could we get $60,000? I said, I don't know. I'll start asking what people know, what kind of funding mechanisms may be out there. If you know something they haven't thought of, they would really like to hear that, so that's all.
All right, so be thinking about that before next week. I had, I had the chamber board meeting. That's what we had. So they are moving forward with Fall Festival. Going to move it to a two-day event with that. Other things we got to do, I was on the news again from Like the Headless Chicken. So there, the car show is coming back this year. So they did a video shoot. A munchies opened on Sunday, so they could go in there and do a shoot, get information out there on the car show, so that's moving forward as well. So I think a lot of good things happening in our community. That's all I have as far as reports on that. So with that, so we're going to move into executive session. We've got two different things on our executive session. So the first one is discussion and possible action to consider a motion. So we need a motion to convene in the executive session regarding personnel issues under CRS Section 24-6402-F, 4F, which is the municipal court judge informal review. And so we've got Judge Robinson on the line, who's going to be attended virtually. So we're going to need a motion to go into that executive session.
See if I can get this right. I moved, we moved to meet in the executive session for the informal review of the municipal court judge, which is a discussion of a personal matter under CRS Section 24-6-402-4F.
Second. Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Buck?
Yes.
Counselor Lenhart?
Yes.
Counselor Breaman?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right, let me get back to my.